Okay, the recording has started, so let's remain seated for the vacation. At this time of year, our attention turns to remembering those who gave the ultimate sacrifice to protect our freedoms as we observe Memorial Day weekend coming up this weekend. Please continue to bless the United States and our allies around the world and help us, all of us in this world, be more caring for others. Tonight, we also thank you for the efforts of Eastern Councilwoman Sandra Volcano. She has given years of service to Eastern and has helped make our city a better place for all. She will be with us for the next seven months, so we expect to work her hard up to the last day with the many projects coming to our city. Also, this evening gives us the wisdom to make the right decisions for the right reasons as we work together as one team to make our city a better community for all people. Amen. Stand for the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. If you didn't hear Louis's comment, our executive session was cut short because we're all, one person tried to get on this call and on this meeting, so kicked us out of the other meeting. So let's move on to a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Ettinger?
Here.
Mr. Milan?
Here.
Mr. O'Connell?
Here.
Dr. Ruggles? Mrs. Volcano?
Here.
Mayor Panto?
Here. Approval of the agenda?
Moved to approve.
Um, oh, I didn't print my new business. Rita, do we put, I don't have the agenda for the new business in front of me. Did we put the pool season pass resolution on, right? That is correct?
No, the pools weren't going to be, we didn't change them. You did that by executive order last time when you just advised council.
Right.
What we're changing is who, how young the kids can be coming without a parent and what age it has to be for a parent to sign up for.
I thought we were also doing the pricing, weren't we, Louis?
We didn't change.
Because Dave would be here and Dave said, we and I can answer the questions. Let me get to my agenda. All right, we can move on. Action on the minutes of the May 12 meeting?
We have to approve the agenda first, Mayor. Kenny second, Kenny moved it, Sandy seconded it, so the roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Ettinger? Mr. Ettinger?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Okay, certificate of commendation, Councilmember Volcano.
Did you do the minutes?
No, no, sorry, I don't have my glasses on, I better put them on. Action on the minutes of May 12 meeting. Moved. Moved, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Ettinger?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to our certificate of commendation, Councilmember Volcano.
Do you want me to read the mayor, because I gotta go get it?
It's up to you, you don't have to read it.
I prefer not to, I think, well, I don't know.
I can read it, Sandy, if you'd like.
Yeah, can you? Please, Rita, I'm sorry, it's on my kitchen table.
No, that's quite right, not a problem. It's a certificate of accommodation being awarded to Mr. Alan L. Jennings. Mr. Jennings began his career with the CACLV in 1980, becoming the director in 1990. During his tenure and under his direction, CACLV created many programs for this organization. Mr. Jennings has been the driving force behind a range of CACLV programs designed to improve the quality of life for low-income people in the Lehigh Valley. Mr. Jennings has served on numerous national, state, and local boards. Eastern City Council and the residents of the city are grateful for Alan's selfless commitment and dedication to improve the quality of life for all people and congratulate him on his retirement and wish him many years of good health.
Moved.
Got it moved? We got it moved?
Moved by Volcano?
You don't really have to, it's a certificate, it's not a resolution. We just read it into the record.
It was a resolution as we moved.
It's not a resolution, it's just a certificate of accommodation.
Okay, it's on our agenda as a resolution.
No, it's not, sir.
I'm looking at the agenda, it says a resolution introduced by Sandra Volcano.
No, it's number seven on the agenda, certificate of accommodation, Alan Jennings.
Okey dokey.
That's why I was a little confused, because.
I will turn it back over to you again, Madam Volcano, for the public hearing on LERTA.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming in to sign this certificate for Mr. Jennings. I'm sure he'll be very happy to receive it. So thank you again. We're going to now do a public hearing here. In accordance with the city ordinance number 52625 and Act 76 of the General Assembly of Pennsylvania, I am opening the public hearing for the purposes of receiving comments and recommendations from interested individuals residing within the said city of East of Pennsylvania concerning the addition of nine new properties in the city's existing LERTA district. The mayor presented these properties for consideration to the Eastern area school district, and their addition was approved at the school board meeting held on April 20th. Mayor Panto also presented the list of additions to the Economic Development Committee of Northampton County Council on May 6. Prior to these additions being considered at a full county council meeting, the county has requested that the additions be approved by city council. So before we begin with the public comment, I'd like to introduce Director John Kingsley, the Director of Community and Economic Development, who will provide a brief overview of each of the properties. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Kingsley. Is he on?
Yeah, thanks.
Sorry.
Well, I'll just quickly try to run through this briefly. I need to be able to share my screen, I assume that I can do that now. Yes, you can say I'm disabled, unfortunately.
John, can you forward me that document and I'll try to put it up on my screen?
Sure.
Looks like this may be our last Zoom meeting and Zoom is acting up on us.
I really hope we'll be able to share it, because I thought it was very useful to connect the properties, you know, in my head, and this way it kind of shows you the pictures.
Hey, John, while that's happening, can you just explain to everyone who's here what this actually is?
Sure.
Because I think maybe some of the public don't understand just the terminology.
Yeah, it's actually the first slide of my presentation, so I can walk you through that while Louis is getting that straightened out. So Louis, I did email you the presentation. So what we're doing here is we are amending, for all intents and purposes, the city's LERTA ordinance via resolution, which we were permitted to do by an amendment that was done previously. And what we're doing is adding properties to an existing LERTA district. What the LERTA district essentially allows for is substantial improvements that are made to the properties within the district are actually eligible for what's known as a sliding scale tax abatement on real property taxes. And with respect to the city's program, the LERTA is actually introduced at 10% per year. So following the completion of the substantial improvements and the issuance of an occupancy permit, the actual tax abatement would start, and in the first year, you'd have 100% tax abatement on the incremental taxes that you would normally pay associated with those improvements. And then it goes, it goes down every year. So it goes from 100% in the first year abatement to 90% in the second year, 80% in the third year, and so forth. And the city's had two different programs. They did one in the 1970s. They most recently established a new TIF district or a new LERTA district in 2012, which was actually extended, we actually extended the period of time that that was going to be available for. I think the initial term was 2012 through 2021. The update we did in 2018 allowed that to extend through 2027. There are currently 20, there are currently 71 properties in the program, and what we're looking to do is add 10 additional properties. Some of you will see that there was information in the packet and associated with the resolution that we had nine additional properties. We actually are seeking to add an additional one tonight that would actually require an amendment to the resolution that council might consider later this evening. And the reason that we're asking to add that addition is we received a request from Kim Kometz, our Main Street manager in the city, to add a property that's actually in one of the Main Street programs. It's kind of a component of the Economic Vitality Committee. They have a storefront activation program that seeks to compel property owners to improve their properties. And this is one that we didn't recognize in the original list and wanted to include because of that. So with that, I can run you through each of the properties that are being suggested for inclusion tonight. And I guess I'll start, work first with Dr. Ruggles. Did I answer the question that you'd ask me to answer?
Yeah, I think that's, that's good. I mean, the point here is too, is that the current tax rate would still be paid. It's the incremental that is 10% per year. So it's not like their taxes go away. They still pay what they're paying currently. But any increased assessment is only assessed or is only taxed at 10% for years, for 10 years.
That's correct. It is only on the incremental assessment that is occurring as a result of the substantial rehabilitation or redevelopment that's occurring on the property. So the base taxes, if you will, continue to be paid in full. Okay, with that, we'll go to the first private property. This is 58 Center Square, actually located in the northeast quadrant of Center Square. This is one of our higher-profile properties. And unfortunately, it has been vacant for the last 15 years. And actually, the storefront has really been kind of covered, you know, for that period of time. And this is also in that program that I mentioned in terms of the Main Street Economic Vitality Committee's storefront activation program. Obviously, we want to see improvements made to this property and put it into productive use. And there is considerable work that needs to be done in the property. It doesn't, it needs a full internal renovation. The current assessment is actually only 49,500. We do believe that this would be substantially increased by these improvements and potentially, you know, some converted use inside of it. So that is the first property. The second one, 697 Prospect Avenue, is actually a property that is owned by the Eastern Redevelopment Authority. It was recently demolished, is actually in the, kind of in the rear, if you will, of the Armory Building at 7th and Northampton Streets. We're going through the process of preparing for an affordable housing, an ADA-accessible affordable housing project on this site. And we hope to be able to, you know, to use the LERTA as a way to be able to reduce the cost to an eligible tenant or owner of that property, so it will reduce the cost of their ownership going forward. The next property is 201 Northampton, is 201 Larry Holmes, and this is what I refer to as the County Assistance Building. This is kind of one of the bookend properties on the riverfront, you know, between this and Kathleen's is kind of like the primary redevelopment that still needs to occur on the waterfront. The, this property was built in the 1970s, has been a public assistance, you know, location for years. We do believe there's substantial improvement that could be, could occur to this property. We think it could actually go up additional floors and perhaps be converted into a residential use. Again, this is another one that we see the assessment growing substantially, perhaps, you know, 10x what it currently is. 717 Burwick Street, which is located on the south side. This is actually the, I don't know if it's still the location of Harmony Press. I know they are planning on relocating out of this facility. This is a location that's pretty close to I-78. As a current assessment, that's only around $200,000, but there's substantial improvement that could happen to this. This is kind of in the heart of the south side, in a primarily residential area. It's an underutilized site where a lot could be done with perhaps a conversion to residential or an increased commercial use. I think it makes a lot of sense to actually maximize the footprint of this property. 16th South Sixth Street, this is kind of in a revitalized area. We're seeing a lot of new residential development. This is the old Wirebok Brewery property. There is development interest in this property. There's going to need to be incentives to help with the redevelopment. As you can see, it's not in the greatest condition. Likely a residential use, again, substantial increase in potential assessment here. This is also located, you know, right near Two Rivers Brewing, and again, an area that is seeing significant revitalization in the city. 37 West Street, which is the former industrial valve building. This is also, you know, located right next to the A&amp;D Tile Store and actually is behind the Ponfret Club as well. This is similar to the property that preceded it on this list. That South Sixth Street is actually a really good adaptive reuse property for the purposes of residential use. Very low current assessed value with significant upside potential. Also, kind of just right in the downtown, really good access to the downtown, but not a lot happening with it without some form of incentive. 121 Northampton Street, which is the Eastern Cafe property. This is one of the last properties in the 100 block of Northampton Street to be redeveloped. There's a current developer that is looking at putting in apartments and a restaurant use in this site. Current assessment is $164,000. We do expect very substantial redevelopment to this property to include market-rate apartments in a high-quality restaurant in the downtown. 601 Reynolds Streets, the former Fleas Club building. This is one of the kind of triangle of redevelopment that's happening in the south side with the Black Diamond Site and the Eastern Yards Project. So the Millard East and the Eastern Yards Project, this is the one piece surrounding the new elementary school that it remains to be redeveloped. It was closed in 2016. Makes a really interesting redevelopment project and one that likely would also be residential in nature. I know there have been several conversations with the property owner, but unfortunately, nothing has materialized. This is something where we would see likely additional floors being placed on the property and obviously, the assessed value increasing substantially as a result. 250 Line Street, which is the largest property on this list. This is the current location of Eastern Food Market, and the Family Dollar Stores had a series of grocery store uses. It also happens to be almost a 12-acre site with really a significant amount of underutilized, you know, property in the form of parking, which is, you know, not really, they don't really get a lot of parking in there. I don't ever see that parking lot even remotely filled to capacity. Lot of opportunity for development here. It is a strategically well-located site. And there could be more commercial, more retail development on the site. I think, you know, an incentive is likely needed to be able to make something happen here. I think also, many of the buildings, you know, need a significant update and overhaul to attract and maintain quality tenants in the area. Fully redeveloped, again, very substantial investment could occur as a result of a LERTA being put in place here. The final property that's on this list is 235 Northampton Street, and this is the one that we just were asked by Kim Kometz to include. This is again in the storefront program that the Eastern Economic Vitality Committee, you know, oversees. It is similar to the property that we talked about in the Center Square. It needs an entirely, you know, full internal renovation and has been vacant for probably, for a little over the last two years. It is again, one of the last remaining kind of redevelopment projects in this area of Northampton Street. And we think it makes sense to include. Again, if council's going to consider this, it would require an amendment to the resolution that would be before them tonight. And that's just a quick overview of the properties that we're suggesting for inclusion in the TIF district. And obviously, we'll look to see what the public comment and questions that are raised related to them. So Sandy, did you want to include?
Yeah, I'll put that on the agenda.
Yeah, did you want to open up the public hearing? Public comment?
Tell me if the property worth Pheno is, is that on the list?
The property, the Pheno property is not on the list.
Was that ever considered?
I don't believe so. It's not on the current, it's not on the current LERTA existing properties either.
Because I know that's been a problem property of the 100 block of Northampton Street also, and it is a big property. I don't know, anyone has any thoughts? About that? Okay, well, thank you, John.
Not a problem.
Does council have any other questions that they'd like to ask Mr. Kingsley this evening? Okay, seeing none, then I will now open the public hearing up to anyone who might want to speak on the subject application to the public.
You'd like to address council on the public hearing, raise the bottom button at the bottom of your screen is raise your hand, and we'll let you into the room. I don't see any matter, Volcano.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Then at this time, I will close this hearing and I will make, be making the recommendation, recommended amendment when it comes to G, under new business. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in the meeting, we have public comment on agenda items only. If there's anyone in the attendees that would like to address council on an agenda item, please raise your hand. Again, seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
Okay, under the consent agenda, we had bill number 12 that was introduced by Mr. Ettinger, and that would approve the lease agreement with Michael Raybach for the Locktenders' house within Humor Park. We have several resolutions that would approve certificate of appropriatenesses. One for 19 South Fifth Street, 234-236 Northampton Street, 64 North Second Street, 353 Ferry Street, 135 North Third Street, 22-24 North Second Street, 42A South Third Street, and 340 Bushkill Street. We also now have a resolution that will approve a lease agreement with the Great American Financial Services. We have a resolution approving an agreement with ByState Construction and a resolution approving an agreement with the LoPAC Con swim team for the use of Eddie's side pool.
Move the consent agenda.
Move.
By Ruggles?
Second.
Second by Volcano. Discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call.
Mr. Brown? Kenny's not there?
It looks like David.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, on the certificates of appropriateness, the second location, 234-236 Northampton Street is the one requiring new doors on the fire escape. And presumably, these doors would be fire-rated, and I was just wondering if they would need to be inspected either by the code department or the fire department. I didn't see any mention of that in the paperwork, and I wasn't sure about it.
I.
They would have to have, they'd have to have a permit for that, and the codes would, as part of that permit process, codes would be inspected.
Right.
So they, I mean, once they pull a permit, code has to go out and make sure that it's, that permit is fulfilled, if you recall that.
Okay.
Right, just wanted to make sure. Also, code would also make sure that the door approved by the HTC was the door that was actually installed.
Right, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, he's not on?
No, he's not.
I don't see him. Okay, Mr. Ettinger?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye. There are no reports to be received by council. Reports to the committees will go right to Finance Committee Councilmember Brown. Oh, he's not on. Economic Development Committee Councilmember Volcano.
Okay, the only thing I have to report this evening is that the vacant property review committee met this evening at 5 o'clock to discuss 215-22221 South Delaware Avenue to be sent back, to be approved and sent back to the planning board for the next process. And it was approved.
Danny, I'm sorry, what was that address, please?
215-221 South Delaware Avenue.
To go back to the planning commission, correct?
Yes, it's going through the process.
Thank you very much.
Councilman O'Connell, Planning and Code Committee.
I have no report, Mayor.
Public Safety Committee Councilman Ruggles.
I just wanted to report to council that the two worst fire engines that we approved for purchase have arrived in the city. Last I saw them, they were sitting down at 500 Garage, getting checked out, just all of our punch list items were actually accomplished prior to us taking control of them. But they are here in the city. If you see them running around, they have a little bit different paint job than the rest of our fire agents. They're red and white, and so if you see that, you'll see that's the newer ones. But they look brand new, so they do not look 10 years old at all. And I can tell you, if you get a chance to go look at them, they're in pristine condition.
Thank you, Councilman Ruggles.
Councilman.
Go ahead. David?
I was just going to say, yeah, Councilman Ruggles, do you think they'll give us rides on these new, on these new engines?
I'm sure they would be very happy to. I actually took a ride in one, and that was probably one of the most uncomfortable rides that I've ever had because the seats that are in the, that are in the back of the cab are designed such that when the firefighter sits in it, their oxygen tank goes into the seat. So if you sit there, you have this very uncomfortable seat because there's a section of it actually missing. So be prepared for an uncomfortable ride if you have one.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, Councilman O'Connell, you're welcome to join us on Friday at 10 o'clock. Both Roger and myself are going to be inspecting the vehicles and talking some fire department stuff. So, but we're limited.
Okay.
I'm limited to only three council members. So if you want to join us, you're more than welcome. If anyone else wants to join us, please let us know. Part of what we're going to be doing, Councilman Ruggles, is just meeting with the mechanic and going over some other detail.
And that's located where, Louis?
On Friday, we're meeting at 10 o'clock at the 500 complex.
500 complex.
Yep.
Anything else, Dr. Ruggles?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Public Works Committee, Councilman Ettinger.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report tonight. I will, however, be introducing bills number 14 and 17.
Very good. Councilman Milan, Administration Committee.
I have no report, Mayor.
Mr. Shearer Solicitors Meeting, so report.
Yeah, so the city council met prior to the to the regular meeting for an executive session during which there was a very brief conversation concerning Easton real estate rights and then a more extensive conversation concerning a lawsuit that's going on and valves, it valves into personnel issues too. And that meeting became suddenly disrupted when this meeting came on. But that's what we city council did meet and and for those for that purpose in executive session prior to this meeting. And I have no other report.
And I will be calling you, the council members, or you can email me what your decision was about the major topic we talked about because we never got to get the consensus. We can't take a vote, but we have to have some consensus because that suit comes right before your next meeting. So we need to discuss that, at least your your opinion of it. Mayor's report. At this time, I'd like to, you know, last meeting, I reported that we have a $20.6 million ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act money coming into the city. We're making way for that now. Tonight, I'd like to add to the agenda. What I wanted to add was not was I'd like to at least have city councils consensus to open up a a separate account. I'd like to make sure that that audit is easy to handle, and we usually do that with other federal dollars that we do. We actually open up a separate bank account so that all funds that come into that account and leave that account are well documented and audited for audit purposes. I would like to also mention that the ARP funds, we're having a meeting on June 1st, when we start open meetings. That meeting is a public hearing on American Rescue Plan dollars. We only have interim rulings so far from the US Treasury. I was on a call within US Treasury and the White House yesterday. We only have interim rulings. The rulings will not come out, the final regulations probably till sometime late June or July. And but they've given us a pretty good idea. There were 280 mayors on the call. They give us some good ideas about what we may or may not be able to spend the money on. And Louis and Mark have been on meetings with the other six cities. And it seems obvious that this money is not manna from heaven. It is really meant for COVID-related expenses. So the idea of some of the things that you might want will not be will not qualify for this money. Obviously, anything dealing with with revenue replacement, definitely legit. Anything dealing with homelessness, affordable housing, foreclosure and eviction prevention, that is all covered by this. And we're developing programs for that. We know that that's covered. But some of the other things that, you know, may not be as easy to to, we were gonna have to get free approval from US Treasury before we do anything, just to make sure. Also like to say that this weekend, the Memorial Day Parade, the Veterans Council is not having a Memorial Day Parade, but they are having the service. So if you want to be involved in the service, the Memorial Day services will start at 11:15 on the bridge, the Northham Street Bridge. We'll be throwing the wreath over the over the bridge and launching the boat and a gun salute, and then we'll be walking down to the covered amphitheater, the one down by the Riverside Park, where there's also bathrooms and backs on this where everybody can sit down. So it's a little bit different yet this year. It's not quite out of COVID, but by next year, hopefully we'll be back to normal. Also, on the June 1st meeting, I've added to the agenda a new parking configuration for the downtown. I'd like to get the input. We've been talking about that and how we replace those 45 or so, 47 spaces on Church Street when we start building the garage next week. I'd like to get Public Works and Traffic have been working on that. We've also tried to identify other places we can put street parking. We talked about a lot of things about parking in downtown and the severity of trying to find a space on the street. We talked about the trolley this year will be used primarily for shuttling people around the downtown so that they can hop on and hop off if they park at the garage and are going to, let's say, the the new African American restaurant. I can announce that now, the African American restaurant opening up on the 300 block of Northham Street. We're excited about that announcement, and we're also excited about one other announcement of another restaurant coming. He's like a very well-known restaurant from Lee Valley I can't tell you about right now, but we're going to be trying to shuttle people around from the parking garages so that they park in the parking garages and continue to shop and eat in downtown Easton. Also, I want to congratulate Richard McAtier. Yesterday, he received an honorary doctorate for his public service to the city and the college. As you know, Dick has been a longtime member of the Regional Authority Board of Directors. It was very nice, very, he did not, he wanted a private ceremony, so it was held at the President's Gardens in the back. It was a very nice setting. There are probably about only about 15 or 20 people there. It was really nice. I would like to remind the city council that meetings of the authorities, boards and commissions and city council open to the public on June 1st. However, masks are still being required. We're going to follow CDC guidelines and right now HR and Louis are looking into that as to exactly what Louis just told me, and he can explain to him under his report. If you're fully vaccinated, the CDC says you don't need to wear your mask. We don't know if you're, the public's fully vaccinated or not, so we're gonna have to require masks. Everywhere I've gone so far indoors, they still require masks. So I'm all for opening up the meetings and getting back to normal. So I do know that there, like we had issues with our executive session tonight, and I see that Mr. Brown still isn't on. And he was on in our executive session, so I know he knows about this meeting. He tried to sign on. But when he was on and got off, the computers are just not as dependable as having a meeting in public. We will still live stream them, like we've been in the past with our new TV system in there. We have three three cameras that are controlled by an operator and people can call in or at least see that and hear what's going on in the meetings.
Mayor, those meetings won't be Zoom then, right? They're just going to be strictly live streamed like we did in the past?
Absolutely the same way.
Thank you.
And I would like to just announce that, I mean, the zoning board had problems with a meeting last week. So we've been, and and when you're doing, especially planning and zoning, when they're reviewing plans and projects for the city, they really need to see and touch and feel those things. So the plans, you could put them up on the screen and like John's presentation night was fine because just showing the properties. But when you're starting to look at site plans and parking layouts and landscaping layouts, it tends to be very difficult. So I think I'll stop there unless there's any questions. Go ahead, Dr. Ruggles.
I had mentioned, I had mentioned our last meeting, it would be, I thought it would be a good idea to get some type of web presence for suggestions from the public. I mean, I applaud the June 1st meeting, but I think, you know, we want to try to get as much public input as possible. And I would hope that sometime maybe during the month of June, we'd be able to launch some type of method in a website, you know.
IT is looking at an online survey. Our problem right now is that we only have the interim regulations, interim 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 ruling. What we'd like to do is wait a few more weeks till we actually get some more substance. Obviously, we know the ones that we can use, but like, let's say somebody comes up and says, oh, they think it'd be great to have an environmental study center down at the Eastern Iron Metal Site. Sorry, it's not, it's not, it's not allowed by the regulations. So we need to be a little bit mindful that it's not a wish list. And what we'd like to do is that meeting is presented to the public, what we think is going to be available for the city to expand. I've already met with one developer about affordable housing project on the south side. And we know we have, this is Volcano and I have been working on another one on the south side. So plus the 55 units that are coming onboard at the mill at Easton. So we we are starting to look at how we can put together an affordable housing packet that shows people what we have available and how they become available for it. We believe that it should be Eastern residents only. We believe that they have to be working and gainfully employed because they have to be bankable. Let's say they have a building, a house that's, we're gonna, we're gonna sell for $140,000, give them $40,000 upfront with closing costs, down payment, et cetera. They still have to be banked, they'll still have a mortgage of $100,000. So they have to be bankable, and we'll work with the various banks. Thank you, Dr. Ruggles. Sent to John Kingsley today, the Wells Fargo Affordable Housing Program, and we're looking into that. So as we start to team up the, I know the Affordable Housing, Mayor's Task Force for Affordable Housing has is getting ready to give their opinions and their recommendations, and we'll look forward to that. It should come out about the same time if the ARPA money becomes available. And hopefully by the end of the summer, we'll have a really nice affordable housing program that builds new houses and rehabilitates old houses. Unfortunately, we're starting at a time when the housing market in the city is the highest it's ever been, ever been and in the whole area, the Holy Eye Valley. So it's making it more difficult to find. You know, I was in office last time in the in the 1980s, that is not 2000, this is not there yet, but the 1980s, I know it's a long time ago. But we actually were selling, we sold 30 houses for a dollar. The unfortunate part about that program was that it was called the Old Home Program, and only two houses were owner occupied. All the rest were residential rentals, and that's just not the way to build a community. The way to build a community is to give people family wealth by getting, building up equity in their houses and living in that house. And so all of our affordable housing buildings will have deed restrictions that do not allow them to be sold or turned into rental apartments. They have to be owner occupied. And I think that's really important for any any of the neighborhoods that we go into, that they're gonna know that they're owner occupied. And they have to be, what I call the working poor, they have to be gainfully employed.
I I would, I wouldn't mind having a survey or out there that identifies what people see as our needs. Like I said last time, I, you know, some of the stuff, whether it might not be funded by, you know, the federal dollars, we may look at something and say, oh, hey, yeah, that's really important. We're gonna take city dollars and and address that. So I mean, I I think getting ideas from the public would be very beneficial regardless of whether that particular idea would be fundable through this particular federal.
We will have, we will have several plans and and surveys online that we can do that with. There's several good news in in the upcoming audit. We do expect a surplus in the in the annual budgets because of our refinancing that city council approved during the pandemic. We're gonna lower our debt by about $700,000 a year. So that's additional money there. So we're gonna be presenting a brand new 2020 budget and a whole financial packet that's gonna talk about the revenue replacement and what we're gonna do with that and how it's gonna help replenish all of our fund balances that we used last year because we were five and a half million dollars short. So I think, I think you're gonna see, you know, in the next July and August, you're gonna be very busy with ARP and and just the money that we have. For example, one of the things I know that came up that I'd like to explore, and it is, it is eligible. Right now, the Suburban Water Authority is only replacing lead pipe leads when they find them. So if I dig up my my house and I'm responsible to the curb box and the curb box to the main line is lead, they'll replace it. But I'd like to have a program that says, okay, where are these? And let's start doing it. They do them when they replace, the mains are all, none of the mains are lead, none of the mains are lead. But we do have that short distance between the main and the curb box that some of them, and I don't, I don't, I can't quantify that tonight, but that would definitely be covered. But what's not covered is what I thought we could do is start repaving every street in the city, and we can't. If we do underground infrastructure replacement, water sewer, stormwater, we can obviously repave the road with ARP money, but we can't just pave a street that doesn't have any infrastructure needs in it. So all those things will be looked at. We're looking at right now, when you're, when you, we approve the by state construction, we have the new pedestrian improvements along 13th Street. We, I just signed a letter to Senator Casey today, and I talked to his staff. We're looking for, as this is Volcano knows, the dollars to get a grant from Route 78 down Philadelphia Road, St. John Street to downtown to unify St. John Street, the Southern Carter coming into the city. Unfortunately, that's gonna be difficult because it's a PennDOT road. We did the CBS project there on the south side. I was a young college student when the road, St. John Street was widened from two lanes to four lanes, and we fought like crazy to get the median. And at least it makes it help where people can cross two lanes, get to a median and and then wait for the rest of the traffic to stop before they actually cross. They're not crossing four lanes at a time. Well, we had the CBS developer, I had him agreeing to do the median all the way out Philadelphia Road. I mean, Philadelphia Road's four lanes wide, it's only two lanes that are being used, single lane traffic in each direction. But PennDOT wouldn't allow it. So a lot of times, a lot of our great ideas and things to improve the city are turned down. And that's unfortunate. So, but I think you're right, we will get the input because maybe we will find out there's a big infrastructure need that needs to be, needs to be done with our capital dollars in 251 funds.
And Ken's back, so maybe.
Thank you.
All right, I'll turn the meeting over to Louis for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. And I'm sorry for, but I have a lot of power and have for the house. Okay. Right now, I have on the agenda for this evening, I have several things. I have built them 13, which is the parking fee. Also, bill number 15 for the 2020 health benefits. Bill number 16 approving the transfer, the fund transfer for the health benefits and a resolution for the parking meters new person is gonna be taken, which is Loomis LLC. And also for this evening, we have Mark with us this evening, who's going to give us an update on the financials for April year to date. If Mark's on and now he can go from there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown, and good evening to members of council. Before we start, if I may, take a moment to to recognize someone on the finance team. Looks like that's okay. So Rebecca Deemer, our deputy finance director, I'd like to thank her for her work at the city. She is leaving the city tomorrow. And I'd like to, yeah, to show my appreciation for her serving as, you know, my second, if you will. And I wish her, you know, wish her well in her new endeavors. Unfortunately, she had a conflict tonight, so she couldn't attend the meeting, but hopefully she can watch it later, at least until this point.
Well, she was a great asset to the city for many years, and we appreciate her efforts and her service to the city. I just hope she doesn't move out of the area.
True, true. Okay, so starting with 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 our financials, as as Mr. Brown mentioned, we are looking at the April financials. I did send out a a report on Monday and followed up with a write-up from last night. I did want to thank those members of council who did reach out with questions prior to the meeting. I'll be happy to address any that come up, you know, this evening. However, again, I just ask if there is you know, something that does need a little more research that I just be, give it a little bit of time to look into that and get back to council. Okay. So if we go to general fund revenues, at high level, real estate taxes. When we look at the three basic real estate tax lines, so that would be our current year real estate tax penalties and interest in real estate and the discount real estate lines. They're up slightly when you combine those year over year. We're at about 6.8 million so far this year versus 6.7 and change last year, which is just under 1% increase. The reason I did, I I I'm combining those is we're working with diversified, our new, you know, now tax and utility billing partner to ensure that our split between those three lines is correct. And we'll, we'll, we'll have that cleaned up or any adjustments done by the next report. Transfers to the Debt and Recreation Fund, you'll see that there is nothing booked so far this year. Actually, the the entries were made after the report. Actually, the, the, uh, the entries were made after the report was run and the, and the fi, and the financials presented. So really, the, the, the issue there or the figure that you will see there is just, you know, one quarter of the total annual budget. So on those two line items, you'll see that. Going down to admissions taxes, uh, your twenty twenty-one budget assumes that as is now seems to be playing out that you know, some venues like say theater, Crayola, uh, events over at Lafayette College would be opening back up in July. And uh, the hope is that that does happen and that we do get, you know, those admissions tax dollars coming in. This year, we once again extended the filing of business privilege or BPT uh tax. So that's showing a year-over-year, I believe, decrease. We anticipate that catching up by, by this month. In the housing market, it, it seems like there's a bit of a frenzy. I know, you know, friends who've, who are having, you know, trouble trying to find a place as soon as they're posted, they're, they're, they're gone. So, you know, the, the plus side for, for us is that real estate transfer taxes up sixty-two thousand dollars or, or uh eighty, I think it's about eighty-five percent year-over-year. Next, we, if we jump down to uh TV cable franchise payments. Uh, we did receive a payment earlier this month of about thirty-seven thousand, which, which obviously wasn't booked in April, it's booked in May, so we'll see that. Similar to that, we also received a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollar casino payment, I believe, earlier this month. Again, that'll be booked in May and we'll, we'll see that revenue recognized there. The anticipated or I guess feared decline in household wages doesn't seem to have hit Easton as hard as we had anticipated. Uh, with EIT or earned income tax, the combined uh figures actually up by about two hundred and twenty-three thousand or, or just under eight percent year-over-year. Uh, so that's a, a positive sign there. As we continue to go down, uh, let's see some of the other highlights. Mr. Brown did note that Brink's, uh, I'm sorry, that Loomis, the Loomis contract is, is on the agenda for council's uh review and hopefully approval. As I've noted previously, our, our prior uh cash or coin transport company Brink's has been going through some, some, some rough, going through a rough patch, let's just say. And it's impacted our collection and deposit of coins. Uh, in checking with our traffic division over at the police department, who's now responsible for collecting coins. Uh, we've, we've got quite a number of bags that, that were missed, that were not picked up. So it's probably gonna add about thirty thousand dollars to our coin revenue so far. I think there's still gonna be some cleanup work to be done once we switch over to Loomis. But, uh, you know, I'm hoping that, that our coin revenue gets back online once, once we make that move. Uh, another big thing to note is building permits. Um, you, you know, per the mayor's uh comments about, you know, all the activity going on, you'd expect those numbers to be up. One thing that, that is really gonna balloon that number, um, obviously to the good, is a demo uh permit that was paid last week for a hundred and, just under a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for the Commodore project. So that revenue line item is, is gonna jump when we look at it next month. If we flip over to expenses, uh, if we look at the, the combination of employee-related expenses, so salaries, wages and benefits. They continue to run under budget in, in the general fund. Um, and that's because there, there are some, some unfilled positions at this time. I believe last time I, I, I proposed reallocating the, the twenty twenty-one benefits across the departments and, and I will be presenting that uh, at, at the next meeting. On the overtime front, that was another issue we talked about last month. Combined run rate seems to be flattening versus what we saw in March. Um, we're, we're now, you know, about twenty-three percent over what our anticipated run rate would be. I'm sorry, we were at twenty-three percent, we're now at about nineteen percent. But it's still, it's still rather a, a big number, we're twice where we were last year and uh, you know, unfortunately, fire is, is driving that increase. They're at about two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars uh booked so far against their half a million dollar budget. So they're, you know, with four, four months in, they're creeping up to fifty percent of, of their budget. Now, uh, I, I believe I noted in our last meeting that, that there were some, some issues in the fire department that are, that are, you know, causing that spike or had caused that spike. There's some long-term disability uh issues there. There were resignations, retirements and snow emergencies earlier this year. And uh, we hopefully believe, or hope, hopefully that, see that that is, is now kind of, the trend is, is coming down and, and that will flatten out. It's still going to be a number to watch through the, the end of the year. And, you know, soon, I believe, soon we'll be getting the, uh, the new recruits in, so that should hopefully help with some of this. Uh, let's see here, quickly, um, looking at other funds. Uh, one fifty-one in capital fund, there's not much going on there. We do anticipate the closing or the sale of one eighty-five South Third by the end of the year, which will bring in a nice chunk of change. Uh, our health benefits fund, uh, there are just some timing issues, nothing operational, it's just uh, you know, invoices being booked at different times. So causing a, a little bit of a year-over-year um discrepancy, but we don't, we don't believe that there's anything operational really to, to, to concern ourselves with. Similar thing with the two fifty-three fund or insurance casualty. Yeah, they're, they're just typically fluctuations with, with how those bills get paid. Let's see here, two fifty-five fund or our workers' comp fund. This is one to watch, claims have been running high and uh, you will, will continue to keep council informed of that. We may have to, we may have to uh, you know, increase the budget in, in, in the claims lines. Two sixty-five or MS four fund. Believe everything has, has, has pretty much been cleaned up there. Eight oh eight on the sewer fund, uh, I think there were some, some entries that, that do still need to get booked. So we'll be fixing those for next month. And nine oh one, parking authority. You know, we're, we're still not seeing the daily usage um of, of prior years at this point. Hopefully with the weather breaking with, you know, the, uh, you know, vaccinations becoming more uh, more popular, if you will. And um, and, and people just getting out, we'll, we'll see more, more activity in the garages. But uh, on the plus side, monthly uh passes uh are up year-over-year, so that's a good thing. Yeah, overall, we, we don't see any real items of concern uh, uh, at this point outside of what I did know. We are backfilling uh, just from my, my team's perspective, we are in the process of backfilling Rebecca's position. We, we think we've got a, a handful of candidates that applied um and will be starting hopefully the first round of interviews uh early next week and uh we'll keep everybody posted there. Twenty twenty audit, uh, as the mayor also touched on, that is moving along. And uh, you know, we, we, we think things continue to point in a positive direction. So with that, I will, I will take a break and see if there are any questions.
Any questions for Mark?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get back to um, Ken, is anything else on your report?
No, Mayor, I have none other.
All right, before I get to Louis, I just wanna mention that you probably got an alert today. Republic Services, again, we're having difficulty collecting trash because of um lack of employees, people just aren't working today. And um, the trash collection is delayed, so if you're on the east end of south side today, you may find, get home and find that your trash and recycling wasn't picked up, just leave it at the curb, it will be picked up later this week. Louis.
Mayor, it, it looks like we had a power outage right now um in certain areas of the city. Jim Edinger just got kicked out. Ken Brown only had half of his home affected. I, I don't understand how that one works. Um, but.
I did the electric.
His house is so big, he has two lines coming in.
I know, I was just, I was pulling, I was pulling his leg, but uh, Jim got kicked out, it looks like um, we also had Roger kicked out as well and Dave O'Connell, so um.
Again, it's probably the uh College Hill area.
Yeah, uh, well, Jim's kicked out, I don't, depending on where Jim's.
Extends into West Ward, that end of West Ward.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Good night grid.
Uh, Mayor, do you want me to, do you want me to continue here? Looks like we got some.
We, 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 uh, still have a, we still have a quorum, we have four members.
All right, um. Uh, an update right now, unfortunately, um, I had Frank Caruso here who was going to say a few words, but.
He's still here.
Oh, he's still here, okay, good. This is um, actually, let me let the city clerk back in. City clerk got kicked out. There's Dave O'Connell. Let's give it a second here, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Kenny, were you kicked, you have, do you have power in your hall?
I have power all, I have the whole house now. I just expect a certain rooms and hours.
It looks like, oh, our uh, I was gonna say our solicitor team got kicked out, but it was just Joel.
So definitely College Hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got booted but came back. I, I'm, I'm texting with, with Joel now, he said he's restarting.
All right, I mean, we may, we may as well just keep going there because he's, I think he's still on dial-up or.
Not just me.
Well, I think, I think it's more of a fashion statement for Joel. Everyone, you know, you go retro. All right, let's see here. Oh, there he is.
Rita and Frank in.
All right, I think Rita was in.
And Roger's now out there too.
Okay.
Roger, Frank and city and, and we are ready to come into the room. They're all there in the attendees.
Who's Roger?
No, Rita's in twice.
Sorry, I had a power outage.
Sure, Roger.
All right, it looks like Rita finally was able to get in. Rita, if you can unmute, just to double check.
Can you hear me? Sorry about that.
Now you're letting Frank Caruso in.
No, Frank, I'm just gonna have to allow him to talk, let me see here.
Just a, an issue, I, I didn't really, I didn't hear the end of um the finance report, but um, one of the things that I'm concerned about is the uh real estate taxes. And, you know, we compare year-over-year, but we, we have had and are going to have quite a bit of development that has occurred. And I would like to get some idea of what we would expect from that new development. As far as, as, as income is concerned, because, you know, just take Lafayette's Residence Hall. You know, if we're even year-over-year, then we're behind last year. You know, just from, from the Residence Hall. I don't, I don't know exactly how much that is, but I, I know there's a significant difference between what we collected prior to its construction and after its construction. So um, you know, with, with the many different developments that are coming online, I think it would be good to get a better understanding of what that real estate tax revenue item might be expected to be. You know, because, you know, with COVID and everything, I, I don't know if we're, we're way behind because in other areas, we're, we're way ahead, if you wanna say it like that. But uh, I, 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 I would think that we could do that and, you know, the county would have that.
Yeah, it, it's a good point, Dr. Rubles. Um, I will tell you that uh, with all the new development coming online, the original development that occurred were mostly Koz's like the Silk, Pomeroy, Governor Wolf. And as Koz's, we, they have a ten-year abatement, not ten-year, I'm sorry, till twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-four, they all come back on the tax rolls, which is gonna be a significant amount of money. Several million dollars. One eighty-five South Third Street, we've done the numbers on that. Assuming the co, the, the county assessed it, what we think they're gonna assess it, which is only thirty percent. I think, I think, what's the common ratio, John, twenty-seven percent, thirty percent?
So, I think it's two points, I think it's point two seven four nine, if I remember correctly.
Point two seven four nine, okay, thank you. Could you get more exact?
Let's be precise, Sam.
So, you know, we're, we're, we're using that, but we, you know, in reality, I mean, these are new buildings. If they were building them out in the, in the suburbs, it's fifty percent. But our common level ratio is point two seven four nine, so we're not getting as much, so we're using that. You take one eighty-five South Third Street, even with um, the, the, the Lerd abatement, which we're working on, um, the, the, the first year will, will double what we were getting before when it was a hotel. A hundred percent compared to what we're getting now, because we're getting zero, it's owned by the city. And by year ten, when Lerd is finally gone, we'll get almost a little over a million dollars a year to the city of Easton. Uh, about one point two million dollars to the school district and about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the county. Uh, just for that one development. So you're absolutely right, um, we'll try to quantify that for you. As part of that financial package we want to put together.
Mayor, when does the Koz end?
End of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Okay, Louis, you're up, city administration report.
Okay, couple, couple items, now that we're all back. First thing is uh, hey, well, let me go a little bit back where I was gonna talk about Frank Caruso. So let me, I'll, I'll leave that for last. A couple of items that the, the mayor had mentioned. Number one is that there, there is going to be a fence erected um around the um the, the, the lot where the new Fourth Street garage um is gonna be built. Uh, that fence is gonna be erected at uh beginning of next week, I believe it's June first. We are gonna be putting out notifications out on social media, um, so there's gonna be no more parking back there, in other words. Uh, so we're gonna have about uh fifty or so spaces displaced and it's, it's utilized not only by visitors, but also by uh, by permit holders. So um, the mayor will be presenting ideas on um how we can immediately add. Uh, I believe it's somewhere around sixty parking spaces in the downtown. Some of them are as easy as adding um spaces where there, there uh, where there aren't spaces in, in terms of parallel parking and, and meters. Um, others are potentially restricting um lifting the restrictions on parking, for example, on Larry Holmes um drive where permit holders cannot park. Um, and then others that are a little bit more uh profound. For example, uh, changing the direction of, from par, parallel parking to angled parking. Or perpendicular parking. And the mayor's gonna go over those details in a uh public forum, we're providing him that, that information. Let me see here. I think that was the, the main one. We talked about the uh, the, the fire apparatus. And, and Roger, I just sorted through my emails just to make sure I was correct. Our meeting um is at the five hundred complex on Friday at ten o'clock. We will be actually uh, be driven in the vehicles. Uh, but more importantly, going through the detail regarding the onboarding of those vehicles, going through the, the, the punch item or the, the punch item list. As well as any other issues that the mechanics are gonna go through with us. It should be a good learning experience, uh, because these, these vehicles are built pretty well. They're, they're, they are, they have a very uh good uh reputation. This is the Pierce brand. And we are going to be um, uh, looking at these vehicles as a model for future purchases. That being said, uh, I believe it's next week to, later on in the week. Uh, the city um took the initiative on putting, putting together, and that is the fire department, putting together a um multi-jurisdictional training program um for purchasing fire apparatus. The county um has agreed to actually sponsor um that event. And, and actually, John, are, are you on still?
I'm here, I'm here.
Is, is the county paying for that entire training? Or just a portion of the training?
They're, they're paying for a part of it.
Okay, well, I do wanna acknowledge that the, the county um at our request um immediately said yes to paying for um a portion of the training in which uh, we're bringing in a um, a trainer who will go over the latest techniques um or the latest, I guess, ideas on purchasing uh new equipment. And this is, this will assist us in training our folks as well as other municipalities, uh, departments on um purchasing equipment. Hopefully that could lead into other discussions on um procurement um and economies of scale when we put together a bunch of municipalities and economies of scale when we put together a bunch of municipalities and go out to the market to purchase new equipment. So, that's a positive thing. I think Roger, you were invited to that training. It's gonna be conducted by the same trainer that did the training a couple of years back that both Roger and I attended down at the Main Line on a Saturday of all times, but nevertheless, it was good training and that's gonna be provided to us. If any council member is interested in learning a little bit more, please feel free to contact me.
I just want to point out, Louis, that we will get the low bidder. The state law, we will follow state purchasing laws. When it comes to buying that, we can't necessarily spec a Pierce, which we know is the best. It's the Rolls Royce of fire trucks, but we'll have to figure out how we can schedule it, get the specification so narrow that they're the only ones that can bid on it.
You bet. Absolutely, Mayor. And that is part of it. I know I'm summarizing the details here, but that's absolutely a part of it. The, see here. Oh, the last thing is before I introduce Frank, is that we have been meeting, we, meaning the city has been participating in a multi-municipal meeting forum, which consists of the other third-class cities in the Commonwealth. I meet as well as with Mark Lesnicki, with the other city managers. And we've, we've been meeting to discuss all the issues that we've been relating, that have been related due to COVID, and especially now the new ARP funding and the guidelines around it. This is not new. This is, these meetings started before I even came on board with my predecessor, and they've been continuing ever since, but the frequency now is, is greater. So, we meet almost on a weekly basis, if not every other week. The one thing I would tell you, and the mayor can tell you the same thing because he's involved at a national level with the national mayor's conferences, et cetera, and he gets his information directly from our elected officials at the congressional level, that, that things are still very much uncertain with regards to the ARP funds and what you can use them for. You know, at best, and this is I'm telling you from a practitioner's standpoint, and it seems like that we're all agreeing to this. While we're eyeballing potentially updates in maybe July or this summer sometime, there's a, it looks like we got, everyone just got kicked off again, Mayor.
I see that.
Well, anyway, there's a, there's a general.
We still have four of us. We're still, we have five. I'm sorry, we have five.
Okay, there's a general consensus that we may not get specific guidelines to make changes in the city until next year. So, meaning we may not be able to use some of these funds until next year. We may be start to deliberate on them, but we may not be able to actually start spending down until potentially next year. But we could come back next week and, or in two weeks, and that could change. But as of right now, that's kind of the general consensus. Give me one second, Mayor. I'm getting some text messages from the council members. Alright, while everyone reboots, I'm going to let Frank say a few words. This is technically his last week as a full-time employee. I do want to note that we're very close to, to bring in someone on board as a new hire. They have to go through the background check process, but I will be providing, hopefully, that detail at the next council meeting. But for now, I wanted to give Frank the opportunity.
Did I say a few words first?
To say a few words. Go ahead. And Mayor, it looks like everyone's coming back on quickly.
Yeah. I want to say a few words about Frank before he talks. I know Louis wants to say a few words too. But when I came into office in 2008, many of you will remember that the city had one email address. And people were just starting to get their own personal emails from the city. We're just starting to get better IT, but we really were way, way behind the curve. In a very short time that Frank Caruso has been with us, he has propelled us into the 21st century, so far ahead of many other cities. I, if you see the construction going on downtown right now, it's the new fiber loop. We will be one of the only cities in the Lehigh Valley that has a fiber loop, only one of the municipalities, let alone the three cities, that has a fiber loop downtown, which will make it our broadband so big that we can bring in companies that need good access to the internet. And hopefully, it'll allow us to, under the ARP money, provide internet service to 30% of the students at Paxton, those are schools that don't have internet at home. So, I want to say that in addition to the IT that everybody is starting to recognize as being ahead of our time, Frank has also been very helpful in billing and background, what I call the back office of the city. He's been very, very helpful in the budgeting, the financing, the billing and receivables. And, and over at the police station alone, he's probably saved us several hundred thousand dollars. As you remember, the two captains and the chief did all the rewiring under his direction when the building was being built, saving us a lot of money there. We got a lot of that Cat 6 cable donated by the chief's uncle. And since then, Frank's been over there a lot. The cameras in the city, in the parking garages. I mean, we have better surveillance than we've ever had in the city, and that's all due to Frank Caruso. And I personally want to thank Frank. I know he'd be around with us on a consulting basis for a month or two to get the new person up to speed. But Frank, you came out of the Quittstown borough and you came to the big city and you just led the way. So, thank you so much. I hope you have a long and healthy retirement.
And Mayor, same, same thing. I think since I've been on board, the one thing about municipal government is there's certainly, from a strategic standpoint, very little direction on which way to go. But, you know, in terms of, you know, do you keep systems in-house? Do you outsource? Is it a combination of the two? And I'll tell you that when I came on board, I mean, there was certainly a movement to, to continue to keep things in-house and have hosted solutions where, where I personally didn't necessarily feel that that was the way to go. And fortunately, when I, when I came on, Frank had the open mindness to say, we're still nimble enough and that we can go cloud-based, that the idea of cloud-based solutions is not a risky venture as it used to be because data, data centers are becoming more sophisticated. It just makes more sense. You can scale, et cetera. So, we had those discussions and Frank, for, as IT managers go, was very open-minded to ideas and constantly shifting and changing. And they're still shifting and changing, and Frank and I are still having discussions on where we go from here. You know, we've had, we've been having issues on enterprise-wide solutions for the city. One size does not fit all. Those kinds of things relate to our operating systems and how they can talk and communicate better so we can get better data and make better decisions. We're still having those discussions and it looks like we're going into a new phase and that there's a potential where things have become affordable for organizations our size, which as things go, when you talk about getting one system or one enterprise solution, we're still small. We're not, we're still considered small as the industry goes. But we're constantly having these debates, and I agree with you, Mayor, that it's been a pleasure working with Frank. Frank reports directly to me as the city administrator, and I'll tell you what, he is definitely gonna be missed. Fortunately, I have a cell phone. We're keeping his cell phone activated, and he's gonna continue to be a consultant for us because we have that little bit of wiggle room. As you had mentioned, he's gonna stay on board to help transition with a, hopefully, a new IT manager that we can make that announcement at the next council meeting. I know that Roger has always been concerned about the transition time. I think this time around, you know, we're being very cognizant of that. I wish we could do that with every one of our positions, and we try to. This one's a very important one. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Frank. Frank, if, if from an IT perspective, he actually can, we'll be able to hear him. Frank?
Can everybody hear me or?
Yes.
I was, I was getting, I was getting worried there. I mean, number one, you know, I got all dressed up and he doesn't want to show my video, right? Louis doesn't want to show me. And then number two, all the council members start disappearing. I'm sorry, I think. What is this already? Thank you, though, for the kind words, Mayor. I mean, it's been my pleasure. You took a, you took a chance on me eight years ago to bring me in. And I think we, we accomplished a lot. There's a lot more to do. There's a long way to go. And it's been a pleasure working with everybody, and I think the city and the council in general, the open-mindedness and the ability to be able to be fluid enough to make decisions and to move in a direction. And we're not afraid to do things, and I think that's the best part of it all. You know, some, some decisions may not be the right decisions, but if you don't take a chance on it, you're not really gonna know. The fiber solution is a prime example of this. A lot of other cities may not even touch something like this, but we had the foresight enough to see that, that this is going to be, this is gonna be, you know, an adventure that I think the city is gonna put you seriously on the map, turning into a smart city. There's gonna be a lot of growth because of this, and there's gonna be major companies that are gonna take advantage of this. One of the things, you know, I don't know how they found out about me down here, but I'm gonna be talking at a community center. And one of the things about this is I'm gonna talk about Easton and about COVID and about what went on with the winter market, how things, you know, have shaped out there, the fiber and then talk about affordable housing and some of the things that the city is doing in itself. And, you know, people want to learn from it, and I think that there's a good process there and what you're all looking at and doing, I think, is going to be a model for a lot of other cities. So, I've been, it's, it's been my pleasure to be part of it. I can't believe how fast eight years went here with the city, but I can't believe how fast 30 years has passed on me too. So, to get to this point and looking back, it's very, it's very hard to look and say, wow, you know, it's all coming to, not to an end, but just a slowdown. Here in South Carolina, actually, I've had to go from 100 miles an hour to like 25 miles an hour. So, things are a lot different here. You know, the philosophy is a lot different. Every, the people are very nice to work with and to get to know. But they gotta slow me down. So, that's something for me to get used to. But I will be available to the city. I will be available to help the next IT manager. I mean, there's, there's a lot that is going on. I know that they're gonna have a lot of questions, a lot of different things. So, I hope to, when I do come up, visit family, and I'll be able to stop by and be able to see everybody and touch base a little bit and see how things are going. But, you know, just so you know, just like me going and talking, this is gonna be, you know, it's, it's a hard move, but I'm very proud of what we've been able to do and to accomplish. And Louis really gave us some leeway in a lot of different things, and he's been one of those managers that's listen. Doesn't, you know, force his hand, has made some great suggestions, and, you know, and it's helped all along the way too. So, I'd just say if anything, you know, keep that open mind in this. Keep, keep working on the IT budget. Police, I mean, that's an operation unto itself. They are really moving faster than any other areas as far as automation is concerned and, you know, what's happening just in the general market. So, there's a lot that's gonna be happening over the next couple of years, especially in the IT side of things here. And we're right at that cusp where everything that he did about eight years ago is starting to expire now. And now we need to start to do some upgrades and move forward with this, as Louis mentioned earlier. But I want to thank everybody. It's been enjoyable. You know, best of luck to all of you.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank, and thank you for helping me get out of the, some of the messes that I've been in with the technology. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Frank.
Hey, David.
Frank, I just want to say thank you for everything you've done. I mean, you're one of the few people that impact every component of the city. And, and, I mean, without a doubt. And I can say from the public safety aspect of things, you know, the cameras that we've placed around the city and, and, you know, the video that we capture from those are enormously important. And, and, you know, that's just one of the very many things that you've, that you've contributed to in your short time, I mean, relatively short time in the city. So, thank you very much for everything that you've done.
Hey, Frank, Ken Brown speaking. I wanted to thank you also. I did send you two messages. I don't know if you got them. One was in Cobal, the other one was in Fortran.
Now you're really showing my age, Ken.
I figured you would understand that, but I wish you well, my friend, and thanks for everything you've done for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. And one thing Louis and I didn't touch on was we have online billing, online payments that we didn't have. We have kiosks. Frank was working on getting a kiosk in every neighborhood so that you can just go to your neighborhood grocery store and pay your parking fine or your real estate bill or your utility bill. And we'll get there, but Frank was the first one to put that kiosk down in the first floor. And during COVID, it was very, very helpful because people come in, pay without having to go upstairs. So, it's great. Alright, moving on, there's correspondence, Madam Clerk. Oh, she's not on.
He went online.
Rita's not on. Okay, there's a.
Mayor, can you hold on one second? Let me just double check something.
She's not in the waiting room either.
She's on, she's on with the phone. Hold on, one second. Okay, she can't hear us. Let me just double check. And hopefully, this is the last Zoom meeting, like you said, Mayor. It's only fitting here.
Yeah, Frank is leaving.
We're having so many issues. Okay, hold on one second.
Good.
Rita, you're gonna have to unmute yourself. Well, Rita said that she can't hear. There you go, Rita.
Louis, can you hear me now?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, I'm sorry, guys. I was without electric. I'm just actually, okay, anyway, we have a letter written from Mayor Panto to the Honorable Bob Casey, expressing his support for the Greater Lehigh Valley Laboratory for Public History and Citizenship.
And I just want to mention that this letter is part of the 250th anniversary of the country and the 200th anniversary of Lafayette College in 2026, when we're, the two, the committee is the bicentennial committee and the 250th committee is trying to put together a living history and a place where people can go and get the history. As you know, we have a wonderful history in the city, and you can find a lot between 1752 and about 1900, but after that, it becomes a little bit sparse. So, we're looking forward to that. There's no unfinished business, new business, Madam Clerk.
Okay, we have bill number 13 being introduced by Mr. Brown, which would amend the fees for the parking garage.
So, introduce.
We have bill number 14 being introduced by Mr. Ettinger, where we are amending an ordinance which would allow Reynolds Street between Lincoln and Milton Street to become one-way heading north.
So, introduced.
We have bill number 15 being introduced by Mr. Brown, where we are amending the 2020 Health Benefits Fund budget.
So, introduce.
We have bill number 16 being introduced by Mr. Brown, where we are going to. where we are going to amend, well, we're actually going to do an inter fund transfer for the 2020 City Health Fund Budget.
So introduced.
Okay, now we have Bill number 17 that's going to be introduced by Mr. Eddinger, and it's amending a section of the pool fees. But if you look at what I sent in the packet, it's just changing the ages where they can, children can come at their own without an adult, and then also changing the ages where a parent or legal guardian must sign for the membership application.
And just let me further clarify that, that our lifeguards, as you know, we have 50% of what we need. So if anybody knows, anybody wants to be a lifeguard, we'll pay for their training and certification at YMCA plus a signing bonus of whatever, I think it's almost $300 at the end of the season. But one of the things I think is important is a lot of our lifeguards are younger. So we want to make sure that the age of this, that's why we change the age. But I also let the public know that we are going to be offering season passes, and the season passes will be the same rate as they were in 2019. So those people, we were originally going to charge people on a daily basis, and those that reached the season pass rate would then attend the rest of the season for free. But because we're able to open up the pools every day, just every other pool, we were able to come up with and say, you know what? We'll have the season passes at the 2019 rate, and and that'll make everyone happy to want to buy a season pass. So that's the clarification on the pools. But it will be, they will be opening the middle of June, two weeks later than normal. Normally, we open them on Memorial Day for weekends until school's out. We're not, we won't be opening it for at least two weeks.
So how long will the pools be open there?
Well, hopefully till the end of August, but we'll be open as long as we have lifeguards. If some of them have to, or a lot of times they'll go, they'll go to vacations at the end of August with their parents, or they'll go on, or they're going to college and they leave the middle of August. They take a week off before they leave. We'll do our best to keep them there. That's why the signing bonuses, they, if they stay till the end of the season, they get a $300 bonus. Plus, we raised the lifeguard rate to $12 an hour. We also have summer jobs available, labor jobs. We have seven left. So if you know anybody who's in high school or in going on to college or is in college, there's seven labor jobs still available for the summer. Okay, that's been introduced. Our next one is resolution.
Yep, the next is a resolution being introduced by Mr. Brown, where council reviewed and approved a three year contract with Loomis Armored US LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Brown, second by Rubble, is any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Volcano?
Hi.
Mayor Panto?
Hi.
Mr. Brown?
Hi.
Mr. Eddinger?
Hi.
Mr. Milan?
Hi.
Mr. O'Connell?
Hi.
And Dr. Ruggles? We also now have a resolution being introduced by Mrs. Volcano, where we approved, oh, I'm sorry, hang on one second, got to flip that, where we are approving the ability to add nine additional parcels to the now already present LERTA district.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second, discussion. Madam Volcano, do you want to make an amendment?
Yes, I do, but before I do, I have a question. Since we are at, I will be amending it to add the 10th one. Can you tell me, will we have to go back to the school board to get that approval for that one?
Yes, we will.
So you will do it personally or just send it via letter?
No, I will do it personally. We have to go back to school board. The school board did not, they passed the resolution, but they didn't include the properties anyway. So we have to get to the list of 10, or if you want to put the 11th one on, we'd have to. What's that?
The one I suggested? I would like to put that on, but I don't have the address.
We can add the address. We know what property is. It's Phenom property.
Then I can.
I believe it's 159 Northampton Street.
Okay. Okay, well, I'd like to make an amendment to amend the list to include 235 Northampton Street and the Phenom building, which you said, whatever the address is.
Okay, there's a motion has been made to amend the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Connell. Discussion.
I'd just like to ask, does anyone feel that that should or should not be the Phenom building be put on? It's just been brought up at the Economic Vitality Meetings that they're trying to get some movement on that building because it is such a big space. And I thought maybe that should be included, so I'd like.
Good idea. Think it's a good idea.
I don't have a problem with it. You're not losing any taxes here. You're encouraging development, investment, not even development, investment. It's the type of building that somebody's going to buy and just rent, hopefully, out the first floor and the apartments, and may not put any money into it. But I think it's good to have it on alert as an encouragement.
What do you think, John?
Completely agree.
Okay, then I'm keeping it there, keeping the amendment as is, adding the two.
So we're going to amend the resolution to add 159 Northampton Street and 235 Northampton Street. And Mr. O'Connell seconded it, okay. So we're going to take a vote on the amendment. Mrs. Volcano?
Hi.
Dr. Ruggles?
Hi.
Mr. O'Connell?
Hi.
Mr. Milan?
Hi.
Mr. Eddinger?
Hi.
Mr. Brown?
Hi.
Mayor Panto?
Hi. Madam Clerk, I don't believe it's, I don't think we need a resolution or amendment for this, but you got to change the second whereas to 10 additional parcels. I think that's just part of the resolution. You're listing 10, so I don't see a problem.
I think it's going to be.
It's 11 now. It would be 11.
It would be 11, right, 11.
And then Mr. Lee, you're going to get me the updated list tomorrow morning? Because you're going to add them on to your list of the recommended LERTA additions.
You would have it all by 10:00 AM.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we have to take a final vote on the complete amended agenda, I mean amended resolution. Mrs. Volcano moved it, Mr. Brown seconded it. So Mayor Panto for the vote?
Hi.
Mr. Brown?
Hi.
Mr. Eddinger?
Hi.
Mr. Milan?
Hi.
Mr. O'Connell?
Hi.
Dr. Ruggles?
Hi.
And Mrs. Volcano?
Hi.
Okay, just prior to meeting, we have public comment on any matter coming before the city that's dealing with a concern, comment, or question about the city. Anyone in the attendees would like to speak, please go to the bottom of your screen and press the button that says raise hand. Dr. Ruggles?
Just a question, you had mentioned the the opening of a new account. Was that going to be at the next meeting or is that at this meeting?
Well, we're going to be able to put it into the general fund account first, and we'll have it free at the next meeting.
Okay.
Right, Mr. Leseneky?
Yes, if that's the way you'd like to proceed, Mayor.
I think that's the best way. Because it's not on the agenda, I wanted to put a resolution on it. It says we open up a separate account for the ARP funds. But I, that's why I was going to amend the agenda, but I did not amend the agenda for that. But if if you're willing to make that motion, Mr. Dr. Ruggles, I'll certainly entertain it.
I mean, I think we should, we should do it. I mean, it wasn't on the agenda, but I mean, pick a way till next meeting. We can, we can just do it in the next meeting.
Okay, so Mark, you have your, just add the the bank account number that you're going to use.
Very good.
All right. Anyone else? I don't see anybody else in the public. Anyone from city council?
Yes, Mayor, just a quick question for you. Your June 1st meeting for the public, is that going to be in chambers?
Yes, it will be.
Okay.
Okay, there's no one in the public has their hands raised, so entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Rubble, second by Volcano. Discussion, roll call.
Okay, Mr. O'Connell?
Hi.
Dr. Ruggles?
Hi.
Volcano?
Hi.
Mayor Panto?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Mr. Eddinger?
Hi.
Mr. Milan?
Hi.
Thank you all, have a great night, get home before the next storm comes through. The next storm is going to come through.